Like to, excuse me, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Carla, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Berman.
Here.
Commissioner Savage. Vice Chair Moffett.
Here.
Chair Delardi.
Here.
Item three, excuse me, land acknowledgement. The city of Kattati recognizes that we are on, excuse me, stand up for this. That we are on ancestral lands of the coastal Mewok. We are the, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge indigenous people who have been stewarding and maintaining the relationship in this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This acknowledgement does not take place, excuse me, this acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationship with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect for the land we are on. And now, rise if you can for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 meeting?
I so move.
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven, public comment and oral and written communications. This is a time for people in the audience or online audience that wish to communicate with us on non-agendized items. And Noah, could you please make an announcement about online communication?
Thank you, Chair Delardi. So, the YouTube broadcast is not working. We had some technical difficulties, so the YouTube broadcast is not up and functioning. However, the cable broadcast is functioning and Zoom is also functioning to allow people to attend and participate and watch the meeting remotely. The YouTube video will be posted to the city's account within two days of this meeting.
Thank you. Carla, are there any call-in communications?
Thank you, Chair Delardi. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're, if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Delardi, that'll end Zoom public comment.
Thank you. Item eight, matters at hand. Appeal of the community development director's decision to approve a minor use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue.
Thank you, Chair Delardi. Planning technician Eli Areola will be presenting this item. We do have representatives from T-Mobile here, and then I will be available for any questions, as will Eli after the presentation, if there's any unanswered information that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Chair Delardi, commissioners, members of the public. As stated, my name is Eli Areola, and I'm a planning technician here at the city, and I was a staff assigned to this project. Today, I'll be presenting the staff report for the appeal of the community development director's decision to approve a minor use permit to allow a telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue. Next slide, please, Carla. The proposed project is a minor use permit to allow an unmanned rooftop telecommunications facility. The proposed telecommunications facility consists of six new rooftop antennas contained within two eight-foot-by-eight-foot fiber-reinforced polymer boxes that will be textured and painted to match the existing building. The telecommunications facility will also include base station equipment located outside at the southwest corner of the building. The base station equipment will be screened from view by an existing six-foot concrete wall, and the proposed plans included as attachment A, illustrate the size, style, and location of the telecommunications facility. Next slide, please, Carla. 680 East Kattati Avenue, indicated on the screen by that blue circle, is a two-acre parcel within the commercial East Kattati corridor, or CE zoning district, and has a land use designation of general commercial. Next slide, please, Carla. The parcel highlighted in red is currently developed with a health and fitness facility. Project site is located on the south side of East Kattati Avenue. There are other commercial uses directly west of the subject parcel and residential uses to the north, east, and south. Next slide, please, Carla. For some background on the regulation of telecommunications facilities, federal and state law significantly limit the city's ability to regulate telecommunications facilities. Some significant legislation include the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which prohibits the city from conditioning or denying projects based on radio frequency concerns if the facility complies with Federal Communication Commission or FCC guidelines on radio frequency emissions. The 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act requires the city to ministerially approve facilities that propose co-location, such as through a building permit. And in 2018, the FCC made a declaratory ruling regarding small cell wireless facilities that limited local permitting indiscretion, established shorter deadlines for processing and action, limited fees, and required advanced publication of aesthetic regulations. Here in Kattati, the city council adopted a telecommunications facility ordinance in March of this year. The ordinance brought the city's regulations into compliance with state and federal law and expanded the allowable areas where facilities may be located. Then, the applicant submitted a minor use permit application for the subject telecommunications facility on June 27th, 2024. The director held up, the community development director, held a public hearing for the minor use permit on September 3rd, 2024, and the appellant filed the appeal on September 16th, 2024. Next slide, please, Carla. The appeal claims that the public hearing held before the director was improperly noticed. However, staff finds that the public hearing was noticed in conformance with the noticing requirements established by Kattati Municipal Code Section 17.88.020 and California Government Code Sections 65090 through 65094. The notice sent by the city for the September 3rd public hearing, included as attachment C of the staff report, noted the date, time, and place of the community development director hearing, and included the address and phone number for City Hall and the planner's contact information in conformance with the hearing information requirements. The notice stated that the hearing was to consider approval of a minor use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue, and that the project was exempt from secret review in conformance with the project information and statement on environmental document requirements. The notice is required to, public hearing notices are required to be input, are required to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city at least 10 days prior to the public hearing, and the notice for the September 3rd hearing was published in the Community Voice newspaper on Friday, August 24th, 2024, 10 days prior to the hearing. Notices are required to be mailed or delivered at least 10 days prior to the hearing to owners of the property being considered at the hearing, local agencies expected to provide essential services to the project, all property owners within a radius of 500 feet from the exterior boundaries of the subject parcel, and any person that has filed a written note, written request for notice. The notice for the September 3rd hearing was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the exterior boundaries of the subject parcel on Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, 13 days prior to the hearing. The notice was also posted at City Hall, the Kattati Veterans Memorial Building, and the Kattati Smart Station on that Wednesday, August 21st, in conformance with posting requirements. No additional persons had requested notice of the hearing. In response to concerns that were raised at the September 3rd hearing and in the appeal application that stated business owners and tenants within the 500-foot radius did not receive the notice, occupants within the 500-foot radius were sent the notice for this appeal hearing, in addition to those that were required by law. Next slide, please, Carla. The telecommunications facility is conditionally allowable within the CE district with prior minor use permit approval by the community development director. The proposed facility will utilize a stealth design to complement the architectural characteristics of the existing building and is otherwise sited and designed in compliance with the requirements of the land use code. The proposed project will not unpack the primary use of the property, and existing access and utilities are adequate to support the project. In response to the September 3rd hearing, submission of an RF exposure report was included as a condition of approval. The FCC has established maximum permissible exposure limits for exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic energy fields, and the RF exposure report for the proposed projects states that at a maximum, the facility will operate at 71.2% of the SCC's general population limit at ground level, which is the area directly beneath the buildings, such as the parking lot for the gym. I'd also like to note that a future facility that proposes co-location here will be permitted ministerially because of the regulation included in the 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, and that a report demonstrating that a site exceeds the FCC's limit is not out of compliance with FCC regulation, as long as remediation measures are followed. Next slide, please, Carla. The community services and facilities, economic vitality, and land use chapters of the 2015 Kattati General Plan include several goals, policies, and actions that support the requested minor use permit. These goals, policies, and actions are listed here and described in further detail in the staff report, but generally direct the city to ensure the provision of high-quality public services and infrastructure to the broadest number of Kattati residents. Next slide, please, Carla. The proposed project is exempt from environmental review under a Class III categorical exemption pursuant to secret guidelines Sections 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. Next slide, please, Carla. It is recommended by the community development department that the planning commission deny the appeal of the community development director's decision on planning application 2413 and reaffirm the approval of a minor use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to be clear in what you said there. When you mentioned that the original mailing went out to all building owners, and then you mentioned that for this particular appeal, you expanded that kind of on your own to include all occupants as well? Okay, thank you.
So you're saying that renters got a notice? Are you saying that?
That's correct.
And owners of businesses at the Oliver's Market, where Oliver's is?
We made the labels to cover all properties within 500 feet, but we just did not look to, to confirm that each individual address or suite was included within that. But we did, based on the information we have, endeavor to ensure everyone who was an occupant or a property owner within 500 feet received a notice.
And were we thinking about gym members? Was there something inside the gym to say that this was going to possibly happen?
The city can't speak to that. It's well beyond the legal requirements.
Thank you.
If members of the audience would like to, please come forward to the microphone and state your name? Thank you.
My name is Kira Bowman. I live at 23 Lipton Way, about 100 feet from this proposed cell tower. First thing I want to talk about is I am a gym member, and there's nothing that states that this is happening at the gym. That's number one. Number two, I heard you state that you posted on the Kattati Smart Train Station about this, and I'm wondering, since you're using that to post this information, why, I looked through all the documentation, I did not see an alternative site study. I'm wondering why that spot is not considered for this, considering there is not as many houses right next to them, businesses, it's a little bit out of town. In Village Walk, we're all about having service, we just don't want it on our feet from where we sleep and where our kids sleep. So that's that. And then, let's see. Also, in the study, it talks about rooftop level and ground level, so I'm, I took pictures, my kids' rooms and our office looks right at these towers. And in the study, it talks about ground level, but it doesn't talk, it talks about roof level and ground level, but it doesn't talk about if we're living in a two-story house that close. So I'm wondering if you people could let us know where we can find that in the studies that were on your website that state future projects, because I looked diligently through everything for the last week, and I'm not seeing anything about any of that. So I would like answers to those questions, if that's possible. And that's all I have to say. Sorry, I was a little shaky.
Do you have other speakers?
Hello. Are we, is there a clock ticking already? Have we got three minutes? You guys are nice and let us talk. There is a clock ticking, there it is right there. Okay. Hi, I'm Donna Gallagher. I live at 34 Lipton Way, and what I wanted to address the, really quickly, the first hearing, there was not proper notification, and I found that out by collecting, you don't have these, I had, I collected, well, many of us collected 135 signatures, and we found out that there was, all the businesses did not get a letter. So when we went to the hearing, we were, you know, we let them know that, and so actually my appeal, which I'm going to appeal to the city council, shouldn't have, I shouldn't have had to pay $560 to appeal that the proper notification go out. I kind of paid taxes for that, so I'll address that in a separate thing, but I just wanted to let you know that my appeal was, I found out there was businesses and stuff that didn't get it, tenants that didn't get it, and we had that wonderful little project that you approved, Village Walk, with solar panel ability and all this fancy stuff, yet we're going to put a cell tower right next to it. So the stuff that I've handed you, the chair is, and all of you, is a report that's by a PhD on a commission back in New Hampshire. His job is to measure how far the cell towers should be, and you'll find in that report that they shouldn't be any closer than 1,600 feet from residences or businesses. That's why I want to make sure you knew that. And we have collected more signatures, and I've handed those to you. And we did, you have two letters, one from the HOA across the street and one from our HOA citing that we do not want this project there, and these are the two closest places, and you're going to get one from the Lincoln area townhome, too. They just couldn't get it done quick enough. That's kind of part of the problem, this whole process, is this has been rushed. They've known about the project since March, and then this got rushed, and it was already, the resolution was wrapped up at the first hearing. He's already been sold on it. I love Noah, he gave a good talk to our realtors. It's, it's not mad at Noah. It's, it was already made, the decision was already made. We went to our congressperson, and then we got help with the 1996 Act. Section 704 has been misinterpreted to mean that you can't go after for health reasons. And there's, I know aesthetics and property values, there's been 20% decrease in property values in areas where the towers got closed. What?
You have 28 seconds.
Okay. Okay. Well, I would like to get an FCC radioactive compliance report from T-Mobile. That we have not gotten. There's no FCC radioactive compliance report. And I just want to say about local government, because I have served also, is that you are the best people to choose to protect the health of your local community, because you, you know what to do. It's just like the smoking act. You could do a non-smoking act way before federal and state. You have the right to protect what a great place Kattati is and to protect the health of the children, because it's really more, 10 times more damaging to children's brains than it is to adults even. Okay? And I'm a nutritionist of 30 years, so I have studied this stuff. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have another speaker?
Hi, good evening. My name is Cheryl Brinks. I live in the Bay Tree Court HOA division there, and I'm probably 200 feet away from the cell towers, but everything that Donna has said is that, yes, yes, I agree with and am very much concerned about, from the, the health factors, the property values, the fact that this 5G telecommunications, excuse me, towers could, from some studies that have been done, that, that could increase the vulnerability to our security on our internets and so on and so forth, our phones and everything else, and so we'd be more subject to that, which we've had enough of that already. It's ridiculous, but what goes on now with your phones and everything. So basically, I'm in agreement with everything she said. A lot of people, we didn't have time, a lot of people I talked to in my neighborhood, huh? Did you get a letter? Maybe I did, but they just didn't understand what the letter was, the notice was all about, and I just feel like maybe we could have had a little more information other than, you know, you know how people are, they're a little lax about clicking on this or looking into things, and sometimes for something as important as that, as we feel it is so important that more information and detail should have maybe been given out to everybody, I think. Pretty much, that's home values. I've lived in my house for a long time. I take pride in my home and the fact that it may lose value, potentially 20%, because who wants to live across the street from those towers? The radiation. All of a sudden, I'm just reminded that, I worked for a company that used to own Green String Farm out in Petaluma on Adobe Road, and PG&E has done all kinds of radioactive things there, you know? There were many people that would come to Green String and said, oh my gosh, I'm never coming back here because of all the towers that were put there from the, from the PG&E plant.
30 seconds.
So I want to add that, and that, the stores, the gym could lose business because of that and it'll go elsewhere, so maybe, I don't know, but that would be a concern for some people as me. So, thank you very much for your time.
Do we have any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Linda Hahn, and I live at 20 Bay Tree Court, which is immediately across the street from this proposed location. And I would like to say that I'm very concerned about the loss of property value. We have, I've been a homeowner for many years, and like the rest of my community, we take great pride in our homeownership in Kattati, and I would like to, to express that I would like you to be concerned about our homeownership in Kattati and the value. The health issues are also, you know, extremely concerning to us. We would, I guess I would like to know what other alternatives have been considered for this location. You know, would you put this on City Hall's building? The other things are, are there alternatives like fiber optics to the houses? Is it secure from hacking dangers? Are we giving up our privacy and our security with this? The RF EMF ratings are now classified as carcinogenic, and we're going to be subject to involuntary radiation effects. And I feel that these are very serious things that we should all be concerned about, because if it gets started, where will it end? This is not something that is going to stop. There's going to be more towers, there's going to be requests for more use, and are you prepared to deal with those requests for more companies, more usage? And what will be the long-term effects for those people living in the city of Kattati? And, you know, I think we really need to look at this very, very seriously, and I would really appreciate follow-up on these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Brett Bowman. I'm at 23 Lipton Way, which is about 100 feet from the cell towers. At this point, I mean, 5G, it was 4G not too long ago, right? So now there's 5G. So radio frequencies, it's hard even, anybody to come up to even talk on it. There hasn't been enough time for them to even know what the long-term effects are. They keep talking about ground level. Okay, well, we're all two-story houses. So what's it at the second story? That's where we sleep, that's where kids sleep, all the bedrooms are upstairs. So my next question is, how are we going to feel better about this? And even though you're starting off with X amount of towers, you know it's just going to expand from there. There's going to be more and more and more. So how do we, and don't get me wrong, Kattati needs cell service. Our neighborhood needs cell service. I had to put a cell, little pointer on the top of my roof to even get cell service there. Thank goodness for Wi-Fi calling, right? So you don't necessarily need so when you're in your home, but having said that, where are other locations that aren't literally 100 feet from my house? I can, in the 500-foot rule, there's nobody anywhere near 500 feet in a neighborhood other than us. So to call the 500-foot rule seems kind of ridiculous, and Oliver's is further than 500 feet. So you wouldn't have to let Oliver's know, and I can guarantee you, if you hung out in front of Oliver's and let people know this is happening in our neighborhood, it'd be a big thing. And so part of it is to push, rush, get it done, don't let the people converge and talk and get on the same page, because if anybody knew what was going on here, and we're just a small neighborhood, if they had a chance to, to actually expand it, believe you me, there'd be a lot more people in this room. So don't be confused that there's, there's, there's fairly decent amount of people here, but I'm just saying, if it was expanded out into the neighborhood, nobody wants that. Nobody wants that. What, what other locations are available that aren't literally 100 feet from our house? The train station is one, that's a little bit further down the road, not, not nearly as close to neighborhoods and everything. I mean, I don't know what other locations there are, but it just feels rushed, pushed, and once it starts, there's no stopping. So you start with the small towers, they're going to put more up, and it's going to be even more, and it's going to just, we're just concerned, right? And you can have people come up here and talk about whatever, they haven't had enough time. They haven't had enough time to even know what the repercussions are of what they're doing, right? Just hurry, hurry, and radiate a few for the greater good. Not for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Hello, my name's Clint Weiss. I live in 27 Lipton Way, and I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I kind of wanted to just share my perspective of why to just share my perspective of why I came here. I have a four-year-old little girl, and her bedroom actually backs up to that gym, no more than 100 feet away from where the towers would be. And we try to do everything we can to have a safe, healthy child, like whether it's having the most clean food, or not allowing screens, shutting off the Wi-Fi router to slow down EMFs, and like, it may be too much, it may be drastic, but to protect my child, I would do anything. So that's why I'm here today, and I just want people to look at the fact that there's so many things in our household cleaning products, our foods, there's no long-term studies on, we're starting to see issues with them, and I think we'll see more down the road. So I think there's no study at this point that could show me, hey, there's no negative health effects to having a tower there. And it's something that I want to fight for. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Any questions from the Planning Commission? Brian?
So I have a few questions. The arrangement is between, is it between T-Mobile and the gym, place the tower there?
That's correct.
Yeah. And were other locations considered? Maybe this is for the applicant.
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. Are they going to speak tonight?
I believe they have a presentation, and their radio frequency expert is here. And I do want to note, Ms. Gallagher, as the appellant, has rights to more than just three minutes. So if she has anything else to add, she should get additional time to speak.
Can I go ahead and do that after we hear the presentation? So I'm going to get my money stored? Damn! They told me it was $400, then I went in and they made me write a check for $560. And that's called inflation, right?
All right, well, some of these questions, I'll wait for the applicant to speak, to step up. But just going through, do you know how many signatures were received by the?
I have not counted. Ms. Gallagher indicated her petition was, I think--
And tenants and residents.
Okay.
177, that's really good for short amount of time.
Yeah. And what, how many houses, households fell within the 500-foot radius?
The, we don't have the number of households, but the map is included in the Planning Commission packet, and I will look for the page right now.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that, so I guess I could count it up, but. And this page 39 of the packet, that was the notice that went out to the houses?
Yes, that was the notice for the September 3 public hearing. And then on the back of that, packet page 40, is the map of the 500-foot radius. And then, I don't have the total number for that, the notices, the number of notices that went out for the September 3 public hearing, but for the appeal, there were 427 notices sent out to occupants and owners within that 500-foot radius.
After the appeal came in?
Yeah.
Okay. How many, do you have an idea of how many people attended the public hearing?
I think it was probably six residents attended the public hearing.
That sounds--
Yeah. Similar concerns were brought up at that?
Yeah, the primary concerns brought up at the, at the public hearing were health impacts from radio frequency exposure and property value, potential impacts to property values. Those are the two impacts that were highlighted primarily. And as identified in the staff report, the city cannot make decisions based on radio frequency health impacts. It's preempted by state law, and there's a lot of references in the staff report, we can provide more details. And then similarly, property values or impacts to them aren't something that the city uses in making decisions because it's hard to quantify that. So any type of approval that the city grants are based on a set, a set of criteria that already exists. Those are the findings that are required for a use permit or design review, and those are also identified in the staff report. And staff has taken the time to identify how we feel those findings can be met, and that's also in the resolution.
So for the, the first point you talked about, the city not being able to make a determination on health impacts, can you elaborate on that?
So there was a, the Telecommunications Act of 1996, so that specifically prohibits the city from conditioning or denying projects based on radio frequency emissions concerns if it meets the criteria that are set by the Federal Communications Commission. So essentially, the federal government took the time to analyze radio frequency impacts and has passed a law saying if facilities are within these criteria, then they are allowed, and that cannot be a decision factor used by local governments. And I believe the radio frequency engineer who prepared the report could speak to this in significantly more detail than I can.
Okay. Just kind of what that criteria is? They can elaborate on what that criteria is that needs to be met in order to qualify for this?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a exposure level, so it's a amount, but he can elaborate significantly.
Why was the date selected for that public hearing? Like, what was the rationale for that date and time? I know 2:00, 1:30 on a Tuesday probably isn't convenient for most people.
Yeah, so Community Development Director meetings are held during the workday while we're here working. We have traditionally held those in the morning, so we don't have a set day and time for those, but we do typically try to hold them Tuesday through Thursday to avoid potential holiday dates in the AM hours.
Yeah. Was there any, do we receive, did the city receive any letters or communication from residents prior, before that meeting that weren't able to attend?
There were, I did receive two public comments prior to that meeting that cited concerns based on studies about the health impacts of telecommunication facilities.
Okay. And the language, I'm assuming that's just unmanned telecommunication facility, that's just what is derived from the ordinance, the city ordinance, to classify that kind of cell tower?
I believe that's how it was characterized to us when T-Mobile filed their application.
Okay. Did they draft this notice, or did you get, the city draft the notice?
The notice of the public hearing? That's written by the city staff.
That's all I have for this stuff.
Is the T-Mobile representative would like to do, excuse me, their presentation?
Can you hear me? Oh, there's, sorry. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California and other states. I manage a firm of eight. We're located actually over the hill in Sonoma. And a regular part of our practice is the measurement and the calculation of radio frequency exposure conditions. I've been doing this, it's been my principal focus for 39 years. During that time, we've done 20, over 25,000 site evaluations, and McGraw-Hill has published my book on this topic. As engineers, our job is really straightforward. What are the exposure levels, and how do they compare to the standards? And since we deal just in facts, we work across the, across the field. We work for, for carriers, for radio and TV stations, for cities and counties, for landlords, private individuals. We're dealing just in facts. How, what are the levels, and how do they compare to the standard? T-Mobile asked me to provide a supplement to the report that was done by someone else as part of their submission, to focus on the neighborhood, because that was where the concerns were, were being raised. And so we projected what the exposure levels are at the top floor elevation of any of the houses. Most of them are two-story, there are a couple that are three-story. The maximum calculated level is 35% of the FCC limit, 35%. So 100% is what's allowed. This is three times below that. And that's a worst-case number. In doing this for so, so many years, we've never had a situation where a cell facility with, when you took actual measurements, exceeded what we had calculated. We always want to be conservative. So if, if I say it complies with the safety standards, that's a provable fact that it will comply with the safety standards. The, the assumptions we make are that it's on full-time, full power, not always, in that case, that there's no obstruction between the, the location on, on the top floor and the, and the antennas. Actually, building materials attenuate it quite heavily. We include a reflection factor that the FCC recommended back in 1996 that adds to the conservative nature of the results. So we're 35% maximum. Anyplace else is going to be lower than that, lower on the roof, lower in lower floors, lower at the ground level around the homes, all those places comply. And as staff has said, and I'm sure if you had your city attorney here, they would reiterate that if it complies with the safety standard, and that was a point that your director made, was that if it complies with the safety standard, then you can't deny it on that basis. It's a legal matter, I'm not an attorney, but that, you know, I can conclude that it does comply with the safety standards. And I'm happy to talk about any aspect of the standards, how they developed, but I don't want to take your valuable time unless that's something you, you want me to talk about. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Clarification?
Well, you just said that it's, your safety standards are provable fact, and I'm concerned that all humans aren't built the same. Some humans have propensity to radio waves. And is there a difference between children with growing brains and adults with their brains melting away? I mean, speaking for myself. So I'm just concerned that provable fact, I don't, I don't know that that's actually provable fact, because all humans are different and people, is it true that different people might be affected differently?
The provable fact I mentioned is that it complies with the safety standards.
Okay.
That's, as an engineer, I'm not a medical doctor, so it complies with the safety standards. We know from hundreds, thousands of measurements that these, the facility as proposed will comply with the federal safety standard. That's, that's my provable fact.
Well, I'm listening to the residents and hearing their concern that even 35% is too much if you're within--
Please all give applause. Thank you.
Oh, that makes me feel really uncomfortable. Please. If you're within 100 feet and if you're a four-year-old child. So I'm listening to the concern for the safety of the young brains that are within the 500 feet. And on this map, well, this, this almost is the entire Oliver's Center is covered in this 500 feet, as well as Lincoln Avenue behind and into the L section. So 500 feet is a lot larger than what you were thinking. I just wanted to share that with the audience. And so that's all.
If you could clarify for me, again, you were talking about the 35% versus the max of 100%. That, is that 35% of, of output?
It's, it's measured in milliwatts per square centimeter. That's power, milliwatts, passing through unit area, square centimeter. That's the measurement that's used. And that number, the actual number, maximum number would be 35% of the limit of the FCC in those units. So if I understand correctly, it's not the power that's coming out, it's what is received at certain locations. And so we modeled all the floors and all the buildings nearby, all the residences nearby, and the maximum at any location was 35%. Most of them were, were lower than that, that was the max.
And that, and that's based on the number of units that are going to be on these towers, or?
Exactly right. The number of antennas, the make and model of the antenna, each antenna has a different pattern. It pushes the energy out toward the horizon. And so that's, because of the height of the antennas, that's a very important factor to take into consideration. The orientation of the antennas is, comes into play. And then the distance, of course, is the biggest factor. The energy, the power level drops by the square of the distance. So if you go twice as far away, it goes down by a factor of four. If you go 10 times as far away, it goes down by a factor of 100, 10 squared. It's dropping very rapidly with distance. All those factors go into the calculations, and that's where we come up with 35%.
And the 100% you were talking about is the maximum allowed?
That's the maximum allowed by the FCC for the general public for unlimited exposure duration.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other clarify?
Sorry, can I just throw in? So what about the people inside the building who are working out? What, how does it affect going down into the building itself?
The levels inside the building itself, the gym, would be exceedingly low. The energy is pushed out in a narrow beam toward the horizon to get halfway to the next cell site. There's a thousand times less going down than there is out. So already, there's hardly any. The distance comes into play, as well as the building materials, the roofs of that. And we're in and out of buildings on which antennas are mounted all the time, and so we know that that's indeed what it should do, and indeed, that's what it does.
Quick question, I'm not actually sure if you're the right person to answer this, but I remember when we approved this ordinance in March, we talked a lot about how these would be stealth antennas, and you would not really be able to visibly see the antenna kind of behind some, some other structures that just look like the building. Is that the truth with this particular antenna setup as well?
You're right, that's not for me.
Yeah, so the design of these, these antennas is proposed to be behind what's going to appear to be a stucco wall with a similar architectural feature on the top of it as exists currently out there at the gym.
So potential purchasers of homes wouldn't look up and see some ugly antenna?
That's correct.
Okay.
So you talk about the measurements that is modeling that happens, you're not on the, on-site, actually, measuring the tower to different residences or windows or things like that?
That's correct. There's, there's nothing built yet, and so there's nothing to measure. And so all of these are done, studies based on their drawings, their stated height, make and model the antennas, the distance that we measure to the various houses, the height of the houses, all those are done by projection.
Did you, how'd you get all those measurements for the houses?
How? We judge how, how tall they are from a street view. The Google Street View has revolutionized what we do. 20 years ago, we didn't have those tools. So we can determine what the approximate distance is from all the, all the antennas to all the houses, and we know how many stories they are, and we use the standard for how high the stories are.
We were given this document by the appellant, and it talks about a similar situation, I suppose, and it references a New Hampshire commission that was convened by the state. Are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
I guess there was a recommendation that, that the cell tower should be, it was approximately 1,600 feet from any, I can quote it actually here.
Yeah, I heard Ms. Gallagher mention that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's nothing I'm familiar with.
Yeah, from homes, businesses, and schools, 1,640 feet was the commission's recommendation. You're not familiar with that or where that--
No, no, we, we follow the federal guidelines.
Okay. Okay. And then this would be a question for Noah or Steph. As far as if they were required to change, if they wanted to change it or upgrade it or anything like that, what would the process be?
Yeah, so once a facility is established, so the use permit, if the use permit is granted to allow this cell tower to be located in this location, then additional cell towers can be located here with a building permit that are subject to the same limitations set by the FCC. So as long as they provide a report demonstrating that those other antennas will comply additively, so added to the levels that are proposed with this facility, then they would be permitted through a building permit.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can understand the resident's hesitation. It sounds like the FCC is trying to tie the hands of local government from...
That's correct. Just early in my career, when this technology was getting started and prior to having the interpretation of what the FCC law said, essentially, every facility went through a very long protracted process to establish itself because of the concerns that were voiced. And so I think the federal government and through the courts have essentially come up with this threshold and this determination to try to somewhat make the process for this technology to roll out as more and more of us have adopted cellular phones in place of our landlines. Basically, its phone connectivity is becoming a utility service. Communication is very critical. Getting the infrastructure out there is seen as a priority by the federal government. And so they preempted our abilities to make decisions based on potential health impacts and also property values in some ways.
Is the applicant, actually, anybody from T-Mobile going to speak tonight?
So T-Mobile has a representative here?
I'm here.
I'm online.
Okay.
This is it?
Yeah, I guess I can hear you now. Why this location was chosen?
Can you hear me online? I'm sorry, is that the answer?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, this is Eric Lentz. Representative T-Mobile, also David Zinner is in the audience. This location was chosen primarily after extensive searches that prior to the city of Cattati revising its wireless ordinance, there were limited opportunities within the city for any kind of communications facilities. And once the ordinance was revised, this is a commercial area located within the city that meets the zoning requirements that your city had just adopted a few months earlier this year. And this particular building, it's the taller of the commercial buildings in the area, in this particular shopping center. And it has, with these cupola structures on the, sort of the front end of it, provided the opportunity to screen fully stealth these antennas, which was a priority with Cattati, that these antennas would not be visible. Otherwise, we would be doing a standalone tower within this neighborhood. Typically, towers are a lot taller, and they look like a variety of things. But this particular building met the height that T-Mobile is looking for. It's also within their coverage objective area, which is quite small. There are existing sites just to the north, south, east, and west. So this is in the middle of a coverage gap, a significant gap that T-Mobile has to identify in order to, in order to prove that this site is necessary. So coverage maps were provided to planning, and we show there is a significant gap here in coverage. And so this particular site, which is right in the middle of the search ring, surrounded by primarily residential. So this is really the sole commercial location that we looked at. And this particular building meets all the requirements and also has a willing landlord who was willing to sign into a lease with T-Mobile, and that's why it was selected.
Where's the alternative sites then? You should be, you should have access.
I'm sorry, is that a question from the commission?
No.
Okay.
But I'll ask it, what other sites were looked at?
I would have to pitch it to David Zinner there. I believe most of these commercial buildings were looked at. Like I said, the search area is very small. So going outside of this Oliver's Market area, we're in primarily single-family, multifamily residential. There are some parks and there are some schools. And given the zoning code update, we just really latched on to the commercial zone since that fit the zoning requirement. So you could consider all the other buildings in this shopping center as alternative sites. The, you mentioned that, I've heard mention of the train station, which is several blocks to the east. That would be too close to the current facility, which is a little bit further east of that.
Yeah, I mean, if we were really anywhere else, the coverage of that was exactly with the buildings. We were...
Can I have this next to your house?
I'm sorry, please.
Sorry.
I could also say, you know, going north, because we've been kind of discussing this east-west, going north, the nearest T-Mobile facility is at the Benicia Park, just next to the Technology High School. It's in that park, that's the closest T-Mobile facility. So going north, it's all residential between this commercial center and the facility to the north at the park. It's all residential in between. And then going to the east, it's all residential until you get to the existing site, which is further east. And the same thing with the west. The closest facility to the west is closer to the freeway, but that gap is really around where this commercial center is.
Can I step up and ask him a question? Yeah, I mean, wait until after the presentation.
While we have him online, Donna, I'll allow you to ask him a question.
Okay.
And could you introduce yourself for one, please?
Hi, my name's Donna Gallagher, and I live about two hundred feet from the proposed place. Well, my question is, first of all, I heard, you know, I've heard a lot, there's a safety study. Where is the safety study on this type of thing? I just want to let you know that I'm the president of an organization that just sued the EPA and won because there was no safety study on the fact that we put fluoride in our water in the United States. That just happened in the Ninth Circuit Court in San Francisco. So they could not provide a safety study that fluoride was ever proven safe. And there's a lot of things where people toss around the safety study thing, and there never is. So I need to see the safety study. The other thing is, I asked for, and maybe you have it, the FCC radioactive compliance report. We'll need to see that, too. And we were told in the first hearing that there would be about eighteen total sectors, they call them, because I don't want you to be scared off by eighteen cell towers, that sounds too scary. They call them sectors. I sat today in front of Oliver's exactly where I could see where these would be on the... I sat in the exact direction that I've been told southwest, the radioactive frequency is going to be shot. So when I got people's signatures today, I told them, I'm sitting right here where I'm going to get shot at when those go in. So it goes right to the front door of the Oliver's. And Garrett knows. So anyway, and you can't...
Donna, do you have specific questions for him?
Yeah, I read the federal act, and it says you can't use gaps in service to sell the location for these towers. So that's not allowed. So that's kind of a question, how they got around that. And the person they're trying to work with is a nonprofit, so I'm going to look into that, who owns the building. Oh, and they do have another question, since you were, this is what you do. I listened to a lecture in New York on 3G, 4G, and 5G, because that's what they put all three on their towers. The 5G does not help cell reception, only the 3G and the 4G. So I don't care whether I get better reception. I mean, if I want to get radioactive frequencies, I can stand in front of my microwave at home. So I don't want towers to give me better reception that don't give you better reception. So can you answer any of those questions?
There are quite a bit of questions. You asked about the RF report, and planning has that report.
The FCC radioactive compliance report?
Yeah, I think it's the FCC RF report that was submitted, is that the one you're referring to?
No, we have that one, but it's not the FCC radioactive compliance report. Yeah, there is, read the report. Read the report I passed out to them.
This is also three sectors, not eighteen.
Yeah.
Six.
There's three, this is three sectors. There's six total antennas, three sectors. They point in three different directions. Those are the, those azimuths, this is what we went over at the director's hearing as well. So six total antennas in groups of two, so two antennas pointing to three separate locations. Those three locations are sectors.
And we were told in the first hearing, there would be a total of eighteen when there's all said and done, because T-Mobile will sell off rights to AT&amp;T and a bunch of other ones. That's what we were told, and that we...
That's not, that's not how this works.
Well, we recorded the meeting, so I have it in writing.
This is a T-Mobile permit application. This is not an AT&amp;T...
I know that.
Advocacy.
It's just that this particular project is the nose of the camel. And if I've been in politics a long time, that means the rest of the camel comes through eventually. And they did, we were told there would be that, there would be other sites being sold to the other companies. I have it, I taped it.
So T-Mobile legal is online, and he's trying to raise his hand, but I'm not sure if anybody's seeing him. His name is Tim Holinsky.
Hi, can you hear me? Testing.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you, Eric. I was just going to jump in, I think. Yeah, I can't speak to what was said or heard at the prior hearing, but... There we go.
I think we lost you.
I think I got lost for a second because I accepted the promotion to a panelist. Sorry about that. Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to respond to the question. You know, I didn't hear exactly what was said at the prior hearing, but just wanted to reiterate what Erica's saying, that right now, T-Mobile's plan is to have six antennas up there. We can't speak to what AT&amp;T or Verizon will do or what other carriers will do. We have no knowledge of their plans. But our plan is to deploy six antennas on the site.
Okay.
Can additional carriers deploy antennas on that site without going through a...
Yeah, as I mentioned, once a telecommunications facility is established, antennas can be added to that up into the maximum allowed RF constraints set by federal law.
So other carriers could go through?
The potential for them to be located there would be available if this is approved, yes.
And now, is it true, because it seemed like the plans for it shows that the towers are seven feet more above the thing you're trying to use to camouflage it?
All towers are completely screened, all cellular equipment.
Almost done. Me. Can I finish?
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple, just a few more things, details. There's a kids' park. It's a hundred and fifty feet directly from the cell tower. You can see from the kids' park where this is going to go. And I just want to make sure you know that that's really awful. And then I do hope I get the safety studies. And I just want to say that I was, as Ed knows, I was on the city council of Rona Park. When I got a chance to move back up here, I wanted to come to Cattati because you're doing so many great things with your town, and you have the right attitude, and you're... I just, it seems to me that this project is just really the wrong kind of project for Cattati, ever. But especially at this time, and we don't know how much damage this does. So it just, it's not your vibe. I don't understand. It's not your cool vibe. And that's really why I wanted to move here, because I really appreciate all that you are doing here. And for the future, 5G, that will disable our privacy, and it will make us able to be hacked. And I know I'm a member of Patelco Credit Union, and we were out for two weeks because we got hacked. And this will put us in, and cyber attacks will be very easy to do. That's why the suggestion by the gal said if we would do the fiber optics underneath the, they're more secure and you can't hack them. So this is something that's making our security above all the other things I know about the harm. So it just doesn't make any sense to make it easier to hack into us. Thank you.
I want to say I understand your concerns, absolutely. I understand wanting to protect your children, wanting to protect your health, and being frightened of new radio waves or communications and possible effects from that. Having listened to the other presentation that came up here, having read Michael McGuire's report, I cannot see any area where this does not meet FCC regulations. And it seems to me that it is below the threshold for any FCC regulations. And what I would encourage you to do is instead of come to us where we don't have the power to overturn what the federal government has said is correct, is appeal to the federal government and the FCC of why they have the regulations that they have. Because what happens when we try to go against many of those regulations or we go against the laws that they have set forth for us is that we end up getting sued for it. And I think that's one of the more frustrating lessons that we have all kind of had to endure on the planning commission, especially we're an advisory board, is how tied our hands truly are in so many of these circumstances and having to deal with the repercussions of lawsuits when we push back against them. And you are an organized group. You have the ability, and it sounds like the experience and the previous success, to be able to take this to a higher level. And if you have the science and the backing behind, then I would encourage you to do so. But for me, I'm going to vote to deny the appeal because it meets the FCC regulations. And every study that I've read and I poured through this one tells me so.
Shall we?
Are we voting? I was just letting you know I was going to do that.
I just want to note comments, questions.
Okay, well, I'm not playing poker with you. I'm really proud of you for showing up. And this is, this is a town, and you can be sure that we're listening and care about you, about your children, about your health. I'm a renter, so I really don't care about your home values so much. I'm a renter, so I really don't care about your home values so much. Sorry, but that's my reality, that you have a place to live and a roof over your head, that I care about. That I care about. And a safe place, that I care about. My concern is that different people are affected by different things differently. Why do some people get cancer and other people don't? Why do some people get around these radio waves and have seizures and other people don't? Why do some kids maybe are affected by autism and other kids not? A lot of things are happening in our world because of our environment. This is another thing to add, to throw into the environment. And I think that our environment is making us sick. There's a lot of things in the environment, including what we breathe. I don't want cell service, people want access, people want the fastest, the bestest, the... And, and that horse is out, out of the cart. That's not the right term, but you know what I'm saying. I don't know how to get the horse back in. And I would, if there was another site, I would love to know about another site. I'd love to put it on the west side where there's vast amounts of land and put up some fake trees. And there's nobody within 500 feet. I would love that. I don't know about another site. In hearing T-Mobile speak, this was the place that needed to be filled in. So I'm listening. I haven't made up my mind. That's my poker face. My mind is not made up. And and I'm so happy. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for wanting to do business in Kattati. Thank you for living here. Thank you to our staff for all you do. We're all trying to do something together here. So being kind, especially on a day like today, which is October 7th. There's a lot of other things that are happening in our world. So to be debating this, I am so grateful to be debating this and for the wisdom in the room. And thank you.
Thank you, Shelley Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Shelley. Appreciate that. I just want to thank the staff, you know, you got, I know you guys do a lot with limited resources, so I appreciate the report you put together. I mean, my concern, I guess, rests with the, just the notice, noticing that went out before to the public. And I think it, it kind of speaks to the fact that we only had six people show up at the public hearing and then, I don't know, 20 here tonight plus 140 or so people that wrote, you know, against the project. And so I don't know if that's just a breakdown in how the requirements are drafted at the city, but I'm looking at this notice and it's, it doesn't really mean anything to me. I work in public outreach and this is not something that we would advise a client to send out on a project. And so, because it doesn't tell anybody what's happening and it is kind of deceptive in that, that way. I think if the applicant really wanted to engage with the public on this in a meaningful way, there's a lot of things they could have done above and beyond just the bare minimum. And so I think that, you know, if you guys want to do business and be part of this community and be accepted in this community, there's ways to engage with this community that, that clearly wasn't done in this project.
Well, something that I learned about this and something that I took for granted, I have a rental property up in Santa Rosa. And whenever we get notices, I always let our renter know. That's the right thing to do. I did not realize that there's no requirement for a property owner to let their tenants know or their, the businesses know to do that. I'm glad that when the second notice went out, it covered a larger base of people. One of the things that I'd like to know, Noah, is can we change that process in the future to include not only property owners, but the businesses and the residents for future notices?
We can. So our noticing requirements come straight out of state law, tells you how to do noticing, and it does only speak to property owners. And so we have basically, as a result of what Ms. Gallagher brought to our attention, we have, I sent an email personally to all our staff directing them to always include property owners and occupants of every, moving forward for any planning level decision that will add significant costs, obviously, but to Commissioner Long's point, it's important to make sure everyone who's in the vicinity is aware of what's being decided.
Yeah, because what I've learned in all my years of public service is too much is not enough. So the more you try to do your outreach and the more different venues you use to get that done, I think is really important. Kimberlin brought up the fact about our hands being tied. And unfortunately, the state, our lovely legislators constantly pass new rules and laws that we have to live by. And a lot of that, you know, with our housing, you know, our hands are tied on a lot of decisions, even though there are things we don't want, we wouldn't want to do, the state tells us we have to do it. And unfortunately, it's getting worse every year. There are hundreds and hundreds of bills every year. Donna, I hope that Stanley is who you're working with. I know every year he puts out a public notice to everyone wanting to know new laws, new regulations or changes in existing laws and regulations people are interested in. And, you know, he wants to talk to the, to you people and, you know, if he can introduce legislation to change or correct these types of things. You know, he's one voice in Sacramento, but, you know, the more we knock on their door, the more they hear us. And, and I've knocked on those doors many times over the years. You know, I understand that, you know, we need to fill in the gaps because there's a lot of communication gaps with telecommunications. I think probably one of the worst areas is up in Windsor, trying to get connected up there is a nightmare sometimes. But just like, you know, going back, you know, 50 years ago when people were afraid of microwave ovens, you know, technologies change. What they have today, 10, five, 10 years down the road, might be completely different. There might not need to have the towers any longer. They might be doing everything from space satellites. But I, you know, with what has been presented to us and with all the information that we received in our packet and information that we received ahead of time, you know, I appreciate all that. I understand the rules, the regulations we have to deal with. You know, and again, like with Kimberlin, everything has been met according to the guidelines that we have to make our decisions by. I'm sorry, Donna, I'm speaking. So, you know, at, at this point, I cannot see any reason why we have to change this decision. So is there any other comments?
Now, are you going to do a vote? Do you just direct what vote entails?
What is?
Or no vote?
Entails?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I so move that we pass resolution number-
Sorry.
Oh. Oh, okay, I was-
So the resolution before you is to deny the appeal and uphold the original decision. So a yes vote denies the appeal and maintains the approval of the telecommunications facility.
Okay. Kimberlin?
Yeah. I so move yeah, on resolution number PC 2024. It doesn't have a number, does it? Oh, okay. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Kattati, denying an appeal of the Community Development Director's decision and reaffirming approval of a minor use permit for an unmanned rooftop telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue in the commercial East Kattati Corridor zoning district.
May I have a second? I'll second that. Carla, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Berman?
No.
Vice Chair Moffett?
Yes.
Chair Jilardi?
Yes. Noah, we have a tie.
We have a tie, which means the resolution does not pass. So the existing decision stands.
And if I'm correct at this, that they do have the right to appeal city council, correct?
That's correct, yeah. So decisions made by the planning commission can be appealed to the city council via another appeal form and fee. I'm happy to chat with you about that this week or whenever you want to give me a call.
Have I made an improvement on your bottom list to notify people? Do I get your money back, real?
You could talk to the city council about fees.
All right. Thank you for everyone who attended for this topic. Onto item B, Kattati Density Bonus and Affordable Housing Requirements Ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Jilardi. I'll wait for the PowerPoint to load up.
Can I use the toilet?
Absolutely.
We'll take a five-minute break.
All right, Chair Jilardi, item B on the agenda this evening is the Kattati Density Bonus Affordable Housing Requirements Ordinance. And we'll wait while my PowerPoint moves up. Yeah, and I'll even turn on my microphone, too.
Yeah, I mean, we're a good-looking bunch here, but it'd be more-
I think that has to do with the broadcasting issues. So the meeting is still being recorded, but it's not, the PowerPoint isn't being put up as we speak. So the Kattati Density Bonus and Affordable Housing Ordinance update. We'll go to the next slide. So the project before the commission is reviewing consideration of a draft ordinance amending chapter 17.31 and chapter 17.32. And those are regarding density bonus and- Um, and those are regarding density bonus and affordable housing. Uh, of the Khatati Municipal Code to implement changes in affordable housing law and policy, uh, primarily from the housing element and create the Khatati Density Bonus Ordinance. We'll go to the next slide. So the commission will recall, uh, we adopted the housing element in, uh, June of twenty-three. That included a lot of housing policy work, uh, and even specific, uh, changes to the code, and we've been working through trying to implement those. Um, and twenty, uh, May of twenty-four, uh, this year, uh, at the housing workshop we held, a joint meeting with the city council, we introduced this concept of a Khatati Density Bonus. And the goal there, the commission will re- will recall, is to try to come up with an incentive for developers essentially to work with us in Khatati rather than just using the, um, state density bonus allowances, which, uh, through the use of what's called incentives and concessions, developers can essentially get out of meeting many of the local development rules, uh, as a part of these density bonus projects. The incentive that was came up, that the, um, staff and the commission and council worked to come up with was essentially providing more units. So in exchange for us giving you more density, then you work with us to, um, meet more of our rules rather than taking the state's process where you get automatic rights to exemptions from the rules. Uh, the commission heard, uh, an update to the ordinance, uh, in June of this year, and then that was presented to the city council in August. Uh, when the council reviewed it, they thought it, uh, this topic needed much more of a kind of a thorough discussion. And so they took the Khatati Density Bonus out of the ordinance, moved the, uh, other elements of the ordinance, which were just housekeeping items to be, uh, consistent with state law, and directed staff to come back, uh, with a more robust, robust discussion of this topic to essentially make sure we get it right. And so that's why we're back, and we're gonna highlight some of the specifics that the council directed us. Still, uh, identify some of the draft language that staff has refined based on council input, and we're asking for commission, uh, input on any concerns. Things that the council should consider as they take another look at this Khatati Density Bonus, uh, idea. All right, we'll go to the next slide. So this is just a reminder of the significant amount of, uh, policy and legal changes that are being directed from state law changes and, uh, things we've adopted in our bigger policy documents like the housing element. Uh, and again, we've been working through that list to implement, and we still have a fair amount of, uh, topics to go, but we are, I would say, making great progress on implementing, uh, all the changes in state law and, um, the policy commitments we've already made in the housing element. We'll go to the next slide. So, starting with the Affordable Housing Requirements Chapter, so that's chapter seventeen point thirty-one of the Khatati Municipal Code. Um, if you look, the, there's a red line of the ordinance, starting on packet page ninety. And so this is a track changes version of that code chapter with the idea of, um, uh, kind of clear- clearly indicating the things that are proposed be- and before the commission. A more- a majority of the changes are just clarifying language. Uh, it talks about what happens in the case of somebody who owns an affordable housing unit and they pass away, how it gets inherited. Um, the rules about resale of that unit, if somebody who owns one chooses to resale, uh, the unit, and then what happens if I happen to live in an affordable housing unit and I get a promotion, or I, you know, get, uh, improve my, uh, working situation to where I no longer qualify. And so there's clarifying language in the code, uh, proposed not to make significant changes, but just to comply with state law or to make clarity when it's a little bit ambiguous. But there's also some other changes relating to how, uh, affordable housing units are allocated. And so that's in section seventeen point thirty-one point zero two zero applicability. So that's right at the beginning. Um, and there's some proposal there to tie the, um, below market rate or affordable housing unit mix to the city's RENA need. And so historically, the commission will remember, we talk about this a third, a third, a third rule where, you know, the past direction, and it's right there in section seventeen thirty-one zero two zero A two, uh, essentially says, if you're building affordable housing units, we want one-third of them to be very low income, one-third of them to be low income, and one-third of them to be moderate income units. With the, uh, kind of rise in popularity of state density bonus law, we're seeing a lot of units come in at very low income. All the projects the commission have approved recently have been density bonus projects, and they've been all very low income units. So we feel like we're on track to meet our, um, RENA allocation for very low income. But we also have low income numbers that we're supposed to provide and moderate income numbers that we're supposed to provide. And so this change would direct people who are, um, required to build affordable housing units uh, to look to what the city's existing RENA need is in trying to come up with the mix of, of units that they're going to build.
Um, as far as meeting the RENA goals, if we just completely say double our requirement for very low income, but don't eat the other requirements, then we wouldn't meet overall RENA goals.
So I think there are provisions where those could be counted towards the other income categories, but I'm not sure. And because of the pace that state laws changing and the interpretation are changing, I need to get confirmation of that. So it's uncertain right now.
Um, another clarifying question. Is naturally occurring medium income kind of units count for RENA goals?
So we can count, um, non-deed restricted units, uh, for our RENA, but we have to be able to justify how and why we're counting them. So one of the things we've started doing, uh, as staff is when anybody's building a new ADU, we ask them to take a survey to say how they're gonna be using that and what the rental, like, if they're gonna be renting it, how much. Some people have said, you know, we're gonna, um, maybe move in a, a relative and we're not gonna charge them rent. So with the evidence of that survey, we can then go to HCD and tell them, hey, we're counting this as a, for an example, a low income unit, and we have evidence as to why. So that, we are allowed to do that. Okay, so the next, uh, kind of big change that are, that's identified is to seventeen point thirty-one point zero eight zero C. And that's implementation of the local preference policy. So the commission will remember, uh, and that's on packet page ninety-four. The commission will remember when we adopted the housing element, there, we created a local preference policy. Uh, this will, uh, codify that, so it now will not just live in our housing element, but it will be written down in the rules that everyone, uh, generally goes to when they're trying to figure out what is required for affordable housing in Khatati.
Are we asking questions now?
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, um, in this, it says SSU employees. Why SSU employees?
So that was, uh, kind of came about as a policy through the housing element process. So we went, we got a lot of public engagement. It was a year-long conversation about housing. And essentially, um, Khatati has always had a strong relationship with Sonoma State and always valued, uh, connection to Sonoma State. And so that was trying to acknowledge that, nod to that, uh, as a, a great resource to the community and also that the folks who are involved with Sonoma State are, uh, great people to have in town. And so just trying to fo- further support that.
So, in addition to that question, why not Oliver's employees?
Yeah, I can't answer the why not for, for a number of other businesses. Uh, this is one that came out of the year-long conversation we had with the commission and the city council.
This is the way it is, and there is no opportunity to add other businesses? Okay.
Yeah, live or work in Khatati is number one. So if you work at Oliver's, you already qualify.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, our school district is the Khatati Ronert Park Unified School District. I'm not sure where Rancho Khatati School District is.
Sorry, that's my mistake.
And the high school Rancho Khatati spells Khatati weird.
Thank you.
Dr. Gansler had a funny story about why once. I'll tell you later.
Uh, and then the last, uh, major change I would say to this chapter is to push the affordability term from thirty years to fifty-five years. So now, when you build affordable housing, it's deed restricted, limited to those income levels that are required to be, um. Historically, the law was thirty years. It's been changed to allow up to fifty-five years, and we are, uh, maximizing the, uh, the years that it will be deed restricted through this change. So, um, that's all the, the summary of the changes to seventeen point three one. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now, because there is a lot of other text changes.
Yeah, the thirty to fifty-five, um, or the fifty-five-year deed restriction, does that align with current state law?
Correct.
That's what I've seen, right?
Yeah, okay.
You can continue.
Okay, great. So we'll go to the next slide, uh, and so getting into kind of the density bonus. So the commission already reviewed a, a change to the density bonus ordinance, um, which basically went through the entire ordinance and tried to streamline it, took out a lot of the specific references. The commission will recall, we were worried about the state continually changing that language and having to go back and update ours constantly to be in compliance. And so we just, uh, essentially generalized the language in the, uh, density bonus ordinance and say, and said, see state law. But, um, to have unique, uh, density bonus allowances beyond what the state law says, uh, this is the chapter that would be modified, so this is where the Khatati Density Bonus language is proposed. That is in the staff report. And that would be packet page. Sorry. Seventy-one, yep. Uh, and I just want to provide some background before we get into the discussion on that. So, uh, this change, we'll just add one more, um, section to that existing chapter. Uh, and we're here to kind of, to flesh out the why and some of the reasoning behind what staff came up with and hear any concerns that the commission might have. So, um, right now in Khatati, uh, every development project over nine units is required to build fifteen percent of their housing as affordable housing. So if you're building a hundred-unit project, fifteen of them have to be deed restricted as affordable housing. That fifteen percent just happens to coincide with the state density bonus allowance for, uh, fifty percent density bonus if you build fifteen percent of your project units as very low income. Looking back to what we talked about before, we've seen a lot of projects do that because they're already required to build fifteen percent of the units as affordable. The state says if you do it as very low income, you get fifty percent more units. Generally, people are taking advantage of that formula.
Quick question, of that fifty percent more units, does fifteen percent of those need to be low income?
No, it's just the base units. Yeah. So, um, we're seeing a lot of people taking advantage of that, and so one of the things we're trying to come up with is, okay, you're already allowed to do fifty percent, so we need to, we're recommending that we grant more than fifty percent units. So up to a hundred percent has been, uh, the amount of units that we've been talking about generally uh, as the incentive to go with the Khatati Density Bonus rather than the, uh, state density bonus law that you're already allowed to take advantage of. When you, uh, take advantage of state density bonus law, you have access to incentives and concessions. Uh, essentially, if you identify a standard that the city has, like a height limit, and you said, if I meet that height limit, I can't build these extra units that I'm entitled to under density bonus, we as a city have to say, you don't have to meet that height limit. So they have an automatic allowance for these incentives and concessions. That's a lot of power for these developers to kind of get some extra units and not have to meet all the rules of the city. So we need to balance providing some incentives and concessions, but trying to get projects that still meet the development goals that we've come up with, like our community character and the scale of the, of the residential projects that we're used to. So the council directed staff to put a list together of the most common incentives and concessions that we get requests, uh, from developers to not have to follow to help frame this discussion. So height limit is the number one, right? Because if you're asking to build more dense, uh, you're gonna want to go up because your parcel's only so big, and you have all these other requirements to meet. Um, but open space requirements is also one of the things. So Khatati makes you build, I think, a hundred and fifty square feet of private open space, uh, for every unit that you build. Uh, and then there's also a public open space requirement, so there's kind of a lot of land you have to provide, uh, or between balconies and kind of community barbecue areas or swimming pools or those types of things. And sometimes developers can't fit it all on their property. The last thing would be, uh, architectural design. So there's certain rules about gabled roofs, um, articulation in the building, every, you know, fifty feet length of a, of a building. We make you have basically what we call articulation or breaking the plane of it just to make the building more interesting looking. Sometimes a developer can't, uh, hit the nail on the head with all of those, and so they'll ask for an incentive or concession to not have to do it. Um, the other two that I would say were most commonly used were parking and lot coverage. So we obviously have a certain minimum number of parking spaces, uh, and we have a, a maximum amount of your lot that you can cover. Uh, we've changed those rules recently. The commission looked at an ordinance, the Plex Housing Ordinance, that changed those rules. Council approved it. I don't think those are gonna be a problem anymore, and I don't think we need to, uh, worry about those as being requested as an incentive or concession. And so with the commission, when considering this language, one question is, should the council allow any concessions or incentives if you're gonna qualify for a density bonus, a Khatati density bonus? The answer probably is yes, because it's tough for a project to fit everything perfectly. Uh, and we want to incentivize them to do this, so they don't ask for five incentives or concessions. Uh, and so if we're going to allow some, how many should they get? And is there any that are really, uh, important to us that we shouldn't kind of be flexible on? So that's something for the commission to think about, uh, as they provide direction to staff for us to bring to the council. Yeah, I, I mean, there are some of the specific design guidelines, but it's, it kind of gets really nuanced a lot of times. Um, maybe a specific percentage of landscaping or setbacks. Yeah, setbacks occasionally, um, so that's a good one to highlight to.
Noah?
Yeah.
Besides wanting developers to build more than just very low income, um, what do we want out of developers by offering the Khatati bonus?
So from staff's perspective, uh, and this is something the commission, staff welcomes the commission input on. It's essentially, uh, following the design, objective design standards that we spent a lot of time, uh, asking the public and the community, what do you want your buildings to look like? So you'll recall, probably four years ago, we did what we called a visual preference survey, and we got like a hundred and fifty responses. And it was, what kind of buildings do you like and what kind of buildings do you not like? What kind of features do you like? What kind of features do you not like? And just to summarize them, people in Khatati, you know, we always talk about the craftsman architecture of Khatati. Well, craftsman is hard to really implement when you get to be a big building, right? Like, a big apartment building is hard to make look craftsman because that's really a single-family architecture. But front porches and gabled roofs are, I would say, the, the things that really stood out to people. So not really contemporary architecture, more traditional architecture is what, uh, the gist of the survey responses are. So we, from the staff perspective, think gabled roofs, uh, front porch entryways, those are the types of things that we're trying to get people to go towards. Unfortunately, a lot of the, um, apartment building designs that are, that are kind of being financed lately are really predicated on being very efficient, so they don't spend a lot of money on things that aren't rentable space. So flat roofs, not a lot of porch space, not a lot of amenity space is generally what's being, uh, financed by banks because they want to return on that loan. And if you build, you know, you can't rent out the barbecue space on an apartment. You know, the, uh, communal barbecue space, that doesn't actually pay rent. So that's just an example of this term efficiency that gets thrown around in multifamily housing design and financing. So that's kind of what we're trying to push back on is still give us some of our traditional architectural features, give us our open space. In exchange, we'll give you some more units and maybe make concessions on a setback or a, uh, landscaping percentage, uh, in exchange for that. That's the idea. That's the idea.
So to be clear, if they go with the California housing bonus, they do not have to adhere to our objective design standards?
What the law says is if they can show us, or if they tell us, actually, they don't even have to provide, uh, evidence. The, the city is required to provide the evidence contrary to their statement. Um, if they tell us that me meeting that requirement, uh, has a negative financial impact on my ability has a negative financial impact on my ability to provide these density bonus units or the affordable housing units, then we have to give it to them. And they don't have to provide significant evidence as to justify that. And if we want to challenge it, we have to go through the exercise of doing analysis and justification as to why we're not agreeing with that statement. That's what state law now has given developers.
On, excuse me, on heights. That's one thing that we hear a lot of people. They have concerns about height of buildings. So the way this reads to me, it's unlimited height. Can we clarify that to be specific? That, you know, one incentive or concession is equals one story or ten additional feet above what Qatadi standards are? And that to try to, you know.
I think we could do that.
Yeah, these developers are going to find ways around. Unfortunately, with a lot of them having a lot of power in Sacramento, get rules passed to their advantage. But if the community sees that this is something that we're trying to do and we're concerned about, and, you know, maybe future legislation is going to say, sorry, we don't care what you want. But I think it's important that we clarify that as far as, you know, hey, if they want to go two stories and they want their two bonuses, they're using both of them up and they have to comply with everything else.
Yeah, so that's a great point. And one other thing, I mean, if there was a maximum height that Qatadi thinks is acceptable, we could even, and it's subject to what the council's opinion is, but we could even say it can only be a four story building to qualify or up to a maximum of a four story building to qualify for Qatadi density bonus. Those are the types of things that the council could put into it because this is at their discretion. I appreciate the chair's suggestion because that could allow a five story building in a certain instance. Maybe that's what really matters and maybe it's a setting where that does work. So that's a, that's a more flexible way to say it. But if, if four stories is the height that people think is appropriate for a Qatadi density bonus to be given, that could be part of the suggestion to the city council. So that number, I will say, so no one, I will say, no one else has a density bonus like this. This is very, I would say, unique. And from the staff's perspective, trying to be pro housing, but also get some of the things that the community has identified as priorities. Retain control. So it's, it's, but this is an innovative policy. No one else has anything like this that I'm aware of. It gets to, it gets to the last two points and then I'll just end there and welcome commission discussion. So certainty, so density bonus is a right if you follow the state law. So making it uncertain or, you know, even uncertain to a degree would limit its kind of use as an incentive, right? Developers would be like, if I don't know that I can do it, why would I try? So just know that certainty is a big question. And then putting flexibility in the percentage level of affordability is also something that I think is helpful because right now developers would have to do fifteen percent at very low income. But if they could do a higher income level, then that's going to be more rent over the whole fifty five years for those units. It may work well in their pro formas that it actually is a better deal. The last thing to point out to is the state is, since we've been talking about getting this done, the state has made changes that actually allow a hundred percent density bonus, which that was not allowed when we started talking about this. And that's through what they're calling stacking. And so under this AB twelve eighty seven, which just went into effect this year, if a developer provides fifteen percent at very low and then another fifteen percent at moderate, then they are allowed to get a hundred percent state density bonus for providing those thirty percent as affordable housing. So the state's already kind of caught on to this idea. And to the chair's point, taking away some of our ability to have local control. But there is a email comment that was provided to the commission just today. And it's from an architect who we've been working with on a different project. And I said, hey, can you give me some comments on this idea? And his input was the idea of reducing the percentage from thirty to twenty five and then allowing flexibility in the affordability range at all levels could actually make it a better deal to where somebody will work with us versus going straight to the state density bonus. So that'll end. Happy to answer any questions. And thank you for kind of sitting through somewhat of a complicated project. There is obviously discussion of how this is consistent with the general plan. And we'll go to the next slide and consistent with SEQA. And then the last slide is this, I'm available for any questions with the recommendation that the commission review the ordinance, provide input and feedback. And we'll take a recommendation to the council based on all that we received today for them to consider.
Have, have we received any projects requesting more than four stories?
Not any residential projects, no. The hotel is five stories.
Because there was some, it seemed like with that one project going downtown, the city has now bought, was that one going to be five?
That was at least a five story building, yes.
Because there was some uncertainty around how many concessions or how many stories you could go up. Like, it wasn't really certain whether it was unlimited or not, right? And I forget what the.
So that's correct. So. The question is, you know, from staff standpoint, I don't know that it's been determined. Is a height increase a concession? So going from three to five, is that one concession? Or is each story a concession? I don't think that's been decided by, like, litigation or clarified by law.
Uncertain.
I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, and it seems this, you know, until it's actually put out there, it's going to be hard to tell how it's received by the market, right?
Yeah.
With any kind of innovative thing, you kind of have to test it out and then maybe bring it back and tweak it a little bit. Because we could spend, you know, hours deciding, maybe this, maybe that, maybe this. And then we put it out there and it just is bombs or whatever. And so none of you's got to get things out and see how they perform. And then, once you get that feedback, then you can make better decisions. But this seems pretty reasonable, you know? I can see how this could incentivize a developer to work with the city, so.
Shelley?
I had a question about in the, on page hundred and two. In the Affordable Housing Fund, permissible uses include assistance to housing development corporations. Could that be affordable housing development corporations? As just opposed to just housing development corporations?
Well, I think the code tries to not limit how the fund is used to only nonprofits. So I think that's the, the goal there is with that language. Because there are some for profit affordable housing developers.
Okay, okay. And on enforcement, I wonder why it's just a misdemeanor?
It's probably a result of state law.
Because it's, it should be more than a misdemeanor. To me. Spanking machine?
We can ask the attorney to ensure that that's the strongest penalty that we're allowed to enforce.
Thank you.
If, you know, we set certain like numbers of units that should be per acre and then if we double that number with our hundred percent bonus, how is it, is it, in your opinion, is it possible for a developer to double the units that, you know, we say really should be in a multiplex and still meet any of our objective design standards?
That's an excellent question. I do think they will be able to. I'm almost certain there will be certain areas where they'll ask for some type of concession incentive, which, and it's hard to project, Commissioner Long's point, what those will be. And every project's going to be different. And looking at Qatadi density bonus, we have two kind of developers who are looking right now at a project. And they're looking at state density bonus. And I said, hey, by the way, we're, we're working on this. You should be aware of it. They're both kind of interesting lots. So one of them is out on one sixteen, but it's split zoned, where a portion of it is commercial that allows multifamily. And then the back part of it is rural residential. So it's kind of a unique parcel and the density is, I would say, fairly low for something that fronts onto one sixteen because of that rural residential designation. So that's kind of a unique situation. And then the other is on East Qatadi Avenue. It's a kind of a long, thin parcel that's just developed with one single family home right now. And so it's, but it's zoned, I think, medium density residential. And so this would allow them to, because it's not very big in general, it would allow them to get enough units to actually make a project that's more viable. Because there are some just flat costs. So the short answer, now that I said all that, is I think it'll be beneficial to infill projects. So smaller lots that have some constraints. And I think the nine oh two, the cottage housing project that the commission approved, that's a great example. It was a quarter acre. It has that one house on it now. It fronts onto East Qatadi. Under the current rules, you can only build two houses. Cottage housing, which allowed it up to a hundred percent density bonus, they're building six. And it was a good design that fit into that context. So that's really where I think the power will be with something like this is the infill. Kind of to just allow a project to go that otherwise just wouldn't meet the economics of getting mobilized to build a whole new building with two or three units in it.
I would just request that if this gets approved by the city council, that maybe we set a date a year from then to review it and see kind of how it's doing. And then we can make some changes at that point if needed.
Do we have anyone in the public who'd like to comment? Yes. And thank you.
So Adrian LaVie, resident of Qatadi. I remember the first planning commission meeting when you all were seated. And the difference in your dialogue tonight is extraordinary. I don't know if you were always as smart and thoughtful and engaged and knowledgeable as you are now, but maybe you just came out and now I'm seeing it, but I'm appreciating it. And I want to appreciate you and the staff and everyone for thinking about all this stuff, you know? It's so complicated. And it's so easy for me to just go, oh, it's over my head. But, you know, you're, you're trying hard to make Qatadi something that we can say is, is our city. And I noticed like the very first slide had a picture of skyscrapers. And I was like, oh, no. And I, I don't know, maybe we ought to really be thinking, you know, in twenty years or fifty years, assuming that there's still a no climate change catastrophe. Do we, you know, where are we going to grow? Are we inevitably going to grow? And how much further? Right now, I think we're mostly just talking about infill and little projects here and there and kind of on the edges of town. But yeah, and, and I heard what you said, that the projects that come in now are where we can make money. So it's not, let's not have a communal barbecue. Let's not have a place for a communal garden or whatever. So it's here that we can resist that. And, and I, you know, I don't want to say, oh, they're just greedy jerks. Money is hard and making money is difficult in this county. Land is expensive and building materials are expensive. But still, the quality of life, it matters. And so I have nothing important to say except thank you.
Well, thank you. I think all of us come with different backgrounds and different experiences. But when you take on a volunteer position like this, there's definitely a learning curve. And I think that, you know, as we all get to know each other and we all kind of, kind of get a really good feeling as to the importance of this job, that I think more of our personalities and thoughts and everything come out. So thank you for that comment. Carla, do we have any online people?
Thank you, Chair Delardi. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi, I also, I'd like to agree with Adrienne. You guys have made great progress on, as a commission. I've been impressed too of how, especially Ryan Long, you've really come a long way. What I wanted to talk about was whether you're going to consider the safety of concessions and whether the preference. For example, with Qatadi Village Two, you took away with the, the density bonus concession was to take away the, what's the word for them? Setbacks. To allow the parking in the setbacks, where if you go one block away, we have to have five, ten feet of setback. And you're, so you put setback, you got rid of setbacks because of concession right next to a highway, which is dangerous. But you didn't consider that everybody, it doesn't make sense that everybody else down the street is safe, safer. I'm not quite making as much sense as I want. But it needs to have, whether certain concessions are more strongly urged or ones that would have an impact, like the safety of putting, getting rid of setbacks next to a highway when there, there's, it could be an accident that goes into the setback and stuff like that from the highway. So anyways, that's my, my one. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any others, Carla?
Chair Delardi, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Noah, we can't pick and choose what concessions a developer chooses, correct?
Under state density bonus law, not at all. Under this ordinance, there could be some things that we could prioritize, like prioritizing concessions to focus on safety or not granting them height, as was mentioned earlier. I think because this is something that's unique and being created just in Qatadi, we have some flexibility, again, balancing that, trying to make it still kind of enticing to a developer to use when they have the state laws that they can automatically take advantage of.
Right. Anything else for you? Any additional comments? Can I make a, I mean, can I get a motion for this resolution to include comments that we brought forward?
Yep, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Qatadi. Did not, whoops. That's the wrong one.
One oh seven.
What page?
One oh seven.
Maybe I should have let somebody else jump on that one. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Qatadi recommending that the city council amend chapter seventeen point three one, Affordable Housing Requirements and seventeen point three two, Density Bonuses of the Qatadi Municipal Code to establish consistency with changes in state density bonus law, create a Qatadi-specific density bonus and implement the city's local preference policy.
A second.
Carla Rolcall.
Krishner Long.
Yes.
Krishner Berman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Yes.
Chair Delardi.
Yes, motion carries. Staff report.
I don't have too much to report tonight. The city has. The city has adopted its annual holiday closure, so just know that, but it doesn't affect our meeting schedules. The Thanksgiving holiday also does not affect our meeting schedules. I don't know that we're going to have meetings on all of those dates, you know, but just let you know there's none to be canceled for holiday reasons as of right now. And then I also wanted to identify or just follow up on a summary of some recent changes in state law regarding mobile vending. So there's been a lot of flexibility, similar to housing, a lot of flexibility built into mobile vending law from the state. And staff puts together a kind of a, a summary of that in a handout form. We emailed it to the commission, so just so you're aware. So as you start to see or members of the community start to see different mobile vending situations. And by, by extension of that, kind of existing residents, I'm sorry, existing restaurants operating, potentially expansion of their restaurant business and frankly, even some home-based restaurants, which are all now allowed under some of these changes. Staff just wanted to kind of provide an informational summary on that. And we do plan on creating a webpage to be able to direct anybody interested in those types of uses. So there's one place for it. We will get that information translated in both English and Spanish. And then staff will come to the commission to kind of give a high-level changes in state law and maybe some recommended changes to our own code kind of in the vein of mobile vending. So just know that that's in the works. We don't have a date yet, but it is being worked on.
Well, along those lines, I just did a quick mathematics. Looking at the Mambo's tamale stand that's open every morning, Monday, every day, seven days a week. And came up with, if they sell these tamales 300 a day, they will be making about $336,000 over a year. And that's tax revenue that I believe we are not getting. So in, I want us to consider making sure that we get the tax revenues that we are owed, especially from brick and mortar businesses that are going out on their sidewalk. I don't know if we can do the same with a hot dog stand that also has popped up. I don't know if we can actually do that, but I think we can with mambo's because there is no receipt. There's, there's no, there's cash exchanged, that's it. So this is, we're missing out on it. And as it, I mean, they're, they're, they're successful. They found a need and people are buying and they stay until they're, they sell out. So I haven't actually asked them, how many do you have? And I don't think it's my place. And I just am concerned that we are missing out on tax revenue. Because we're a small city and we need to be aware and be on top of it. Because it's like everything else, people will take advantage of what they can get away with, including me.
I like all the activity on the street. It's nice. There's people around. It rejuvenates it.
Anything else, Noah?
That's it.
Do we have any reports from commissioners? Item 11, items received after the agenda was posted, we did get the letter from Scott Moss referring to the first item this evening. Other than that, there's nothing. Everybody enjoy your evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.